Good afternoon. This meeting of the Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission will now come to order. Today is Friday, October 14th, and the time is, let's see, 1:18 PM Mountain Standard, no, sorry, Navajo Nation time, and 12:18 Mountain Standard time. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just.
Well, it's wonderful to be here in Navajo country at the Navajo Nation Museum. I've never been to this building before. It's quite beautiful, and we appreciate you all hosting us here. The purpose of today's hearing is for you to provide input to us on the draft maps. We have a draft legislative and draft congressional map. And today, we're hoping that you'll tell us the error of our ways. Or if you like what we did, it's always good to hear that, too. So please feel free to fill out a request-to-speak form. You should see that on your way in. And at the time that we get to the public comment portion of the meeting, I'll be calling names, and you can come up and tell us your comments. So let's first start with roll call and also introduce the other people at the table. Commissioner McNulty?
Here.
Commissioner Sturts, Commissioner Herrera, and Commissioner Freeman are all, I'm sure, watching this via the Internet today. Not all the commissioners attend every one of the meetings. We're all taking turns and going to different places around the state. This is, I think, our fourth hearing now? Yes, fourth, out of about 26. So it's early in the process, and we'll be going throughout the state for the next three weeks or so. So if you want to check our website and see where other places we're going, please feel free to come to those hearings as well. So other folks at the table are our mapping consultant, Andrew Dreschler, and legal counsel, Joe Kainfield. Our chief technology officer is Buck Forst. He's ensuring that this is going out over the Internet. We have a court reporter taking an accurate transcript of today's proceedings, Michelle. And other people from our staff include Christina Gomez, our deputy executive director, Lisa Schmeling, and Kristy Olson, both public outreach coordinators who are here. And please feel free to contact, talk to any of our staff if you have any questions or comments, or need any assistance. Federal law requires us to translate these proceedings. And with us today, we have a couple of translators. We have a Hopi translator, Jennifer Joseph, and we also have Gerlitt Buffington, who's our Spanish translator, and Ralph Scott, our Navajo translator. And I thought it would be helpful if each of you would make a few opening remarks now to find out if anyone requires any translation services. So if Jennifer Joseph would like to come up?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Jennifer, and I am the Hopi translator for this meeting here. So I will be glad to assist anyone who is needing translation in Hopi to the best of my skills. It can be pretty difficult, and our language doesn't have words for a lot of issues with such. And so, if I may, Nui Jennifer Joseph yan ma tuwa no' imayap it au tumalayankam nui maske tota sen'uma jakawat it au puy yap jita yu'aa tota ka'ka'ama tiwes nui'umay pa'angwani. No' pai pi' antsa i'ka'tubosi it jita yu'aa ta' nup' p'p'au t'ukai ta' no' pai o'vipi angasau nui maske tota nui'um'ami'aa ta' ni sen'um'amp'iu jita t'uvin ta' no' k'ix'ovi jakawa nui nawakne pa'angni'na wakne asau mai'ome'ak it akp'uson s'ongka nui'umay pa'angwani. Askali.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next translator is, will be Spanish, Gerlitt Buffington.
Good afternoon. My name is Gerlitt Buffington, and I'm very pleased to be here to help, to assist any person who needs my service in Spanish. Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Gerlitt Buffington, y estoy aqui para asistir a las personas que necesiten traducción en español. Thank you very much. Muchas gracias.
Thank you, Ms. Buffington. And our last translator is Ralph Scott for Navajo.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Ralph Scott. I'm the Navajo translator. Glad to be here. Kudoh keh'ikidishnil shia Ralph Scottin sh'eh'nek ah'ot'kha'ane'egi bin'i'aa'ade'na'hania l'ap'eh'eh'eh'eh'na'ot'iwaxin eh'eh'eh'ah'ade'ishw'lt'et'n'ew'lt'od'ntl. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, I think we've covered all of the housekeeping items. I do want to also mention, if you'd prefer not to speak today to us in terms of giving us testimony, you can do that also in written form using a blue sheet, which you also should have seen on the way in. So feel free to fill out a blue form if you'd just like to give us some input but not come up to the podium. So with that, I think we can move on to the next item on our agenda, which is a presentation from our mapping consultant, Mr. Dreschler, about the redistricting process.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon. We're here today to discuss the draft maps presented by the Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission. The draft maps are currently under a 30-day review period, which means, which is one of the main reasons we're here today, to hear your opinions of the maps. Before we display the maps, we wanted to give a quick overview of the process in general. Arizona's redistricting process is governed by the state constitution, as amended by voters in 2000 with the passage of Proposition 106. It stipulates that the Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission redraw Arizona's congressional and legislative districts to reflect the results of the most recent census. Due to the 2010 census, Arizona gained a congressional seat. So we're going from eight seats to nine congressional seats. What are the guidelines of Proposition 106? A, it must comply with the U.S. Constitution and the Voting Rights Act. B, must be equal population. Criteria A and B are federally mandated. The other four criteria are, to the extent practicable. C, compact and contiguous. D, respect communities of interest. E, use visible geographic features, city, town, and county boundaries, and undivided census tracts. And F, favor competitive districts were no significant detriment to other goals. We wanted to do a quick overview of the Voting Rights Act. Arizona's congressional and legislative districts must receive preclearance or approval from the Department of Justice or a federal court under Section 5 of the Voting Rights Act before they can take effect. To get preclearance, Arizona must demonstrate that the new districts do not discriminate against minority voters in purpose or effect, which means there can be no intentional or accidental discrimination. Under Section 5, Arizona's redistricting plans cannot be retrogressive. The plans cannot weaken or reduce minority voters' rights. The presence of discrimination can be determined by analyzing population data and election results. We wanted to give a quick overview of the six steps that we see as the process and the timeline for the commission as a whole. The commission was set up earlier this year. The commissioners were appointed following a thorough screening process and serve in a voluntary role. The five commissioners are Scott Freeman, Vice Chair, Jose Herrera, Vice Chair, Colleen Mathis, Chair and with us today, Linda McNulty, who's with us today, and Richard Sturts. After the commission was set up, they had the first round of hearings. Before a single line was drawn, the commission held 23 public hearings around the state in July and August to get input from members of the public about issues relevant to redistricting, such as geography, communities of interest, minority voting rights, and competitiveness. Step three was the mapping. After the second, after the first round of hearings, the commission adapted a grid map, which was approved on August 18. Per Proposition 106, we had to start with the grid map, which took into two of the six criteria, equal population and compactness. Since adopting the grid maps, the commission has met more than 25 times to consider adjustments to the grid to accommodate all of the state constitutional criteria. During this time, they received additional public comment and draft maps. Approval of draft maps, on October 3rd, the commission approved the draft congressional map that incorporated changes based off of the constitutional criteria. It also approved the draft legislative map on October 10th. Step four is the second round of hearings, which you're currently participating in today. We're, during that month of October, we're visiting 25 towns and cities to share the draft maps and receive additional public opinion and input during, during the second round. Step five is the final maps. Upon completion of the public comment period, the Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission will adopt final maps. Step six is the preclearance. As we mentioned before, Arizona is subject to Section 5 of the Voting Rights Act. The district maps must be approved by the federal Department of Justice or the federal court in Washington, DC before they can be used for Arizona's elections. Before we show the congressional map, we just wanted to go through the process of how we got there. And this is the last map, this was the congressional map approved by the last commission and most recently used in the 2010 elections. Per Proposition 106, we needed to start with a blank slate. Also per Proposition 106, as I mentioned before, on August 18th, we had it approved, we approved the grid map. Which then got us to, on October 3rd, the approval of the draft map. The draft map, the draft constitutional, the draft constitutional districts include two predominantly rural districts, three border districts, two districts in the city of Tucson, five districts that are entirely in Maricopa County. It avoids splitting Arizona's Indian Reservation, and has two districts where minority voters can have the opportunity to elect the candidate of their choice. The legislative maps followed a very similar process. This was the last, this was the draft map that was approved by the commission, the last commission, and most recently used in the 2010 elections. Like the congressional map, the legislative map starts with a blank slate, and we come up with the grid map, but that was approved in August. And finally, leads us to the draft map that was approved just earlier this week. The draft map, the draft legislative districts include the old districts under the map that was used in 2010. The population ranged from 155,000 to 378,000, and the current draft map, the population ranges from 207,000 to 215,000. To comply with the Voting Rights Act, the draft map includes 10 districts in which minority voters should have the opportunity to elect the candidate of their choice. The draft includes three districts wholly within Pima County, and three additional southern Arizona districts. It has 17 districts primarily within Maricopa County, and nine districts primarily rural. As the chair stated at the start of this meeting, one of the big reasons we're here today is we want to hear your opinions on the draft map. You can fill out a request-to-speak form at public hearing and provide your thoughts to the commission. Examples of the, of the such input that we're looking for is anything regarding the constitutional criteria, any thoughts on the congressional map, or any thoughts on the draft legislative map. You can also submit your opinion, you can submit your input by, of course, speaking at one of the public hearings, filling out one of the blue sheets, or going to the Arizona redistricting website and filling out public input there. You can visit us at www.aizeredistricting.org, or call us at 602-542-5221, or toll-free 855 This is just a screenshot of our homepage, and just wanted to highlight a couple of different things that we feel that would, that the public has found useful. As you see, there's two ways to review the maps. Up on the left, there's a number of different menu options, and you can view the maps there, or you could go to the bottom, under the picture, and see either the legislative or the congressional map. If you want to find any, if you wanted to watch all the deliberation that took place to come up with the draft maps, all the past meetings are available to stream on the website, and details about future meetings. And also, you have the opportunity to provide input based on any of your thoughts on the draft maps. If you click on the public input form, you'll get, you'll come to a page where you can submit that input. If you click on the draft maps at the bottom of this page, you come to a page that looks like this, and it gives you the opportunity to review the maps in greater detail. One feature that the public has liked is the Google Maps, and if you click, if you see the Google Map circled in red, and click on one of those, you come to a screen that looks like this. One of the nice features about the Google Maps is you can scroll in and really see the boundaries of your district, and it will give the exact streets or the borders of your, your district. And finally, we want to make sure that you stay connected to, to know what's going on with the redistricting process. You can visit us at our website, and you can have the opportunity to draw your own maps, watch current, or current meetings or past meetings, and get updates on future meetings. You can follow us at Twitter at hash mark AIRC, or friend us at Facebook. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dreschler. So our next item on the agenda is to hear from you, and we hope that you will come up and tell us your thoughts. And please feel free to be as detailed as you'd like to be, in terms of specific modifications you think we need to make on these maps. Or again, if you are happy with the maps as they currently stand, please tell us that, too. It's all very helpful information to us. Just a few reminders, when you do come up to speak, please speak directly into the microphone, and you'll have to get pretty close to the microphone in order for everyone to be able to hear well, and over the Internet as, as well. Please state your name and spell it for the court reporter so that Michelle can get an accurate transcript. And I think that's it. I think those are the only guidelines. So please feel free to come up when your name is called. And our first speaker is Heather Anderson, representing President Shelley from the Navajo
Good afternoon. My name is Heather Anderson, H-E-A-T-H-E-R-A-N-D-E-R-S-O-N. I'm the legal counsel for President Ben Shelley, here for the Navajo Nation. I'd like to go ahead and read a letter, a statement from Mr. Ben Shelley. "Good day. Dear Commissioners, good day. This letter serves as an official support from the Navajo Nation Office of the President for the draft Congressional District 1 map entitled 'Commission Approved Congressional Draft Map,' and Legislative District 7 map entitled 'Legislative Merge Map As of 10/1911.' The Navajo Nation Human Rights Commission worked with your organization on behalf of the Navajo Nation to protect Native American voting power by participating in the state of Arizona's redistricting plans." Redistricting. Arizona must abide by the Voting Rights Act because it has a history of discriminatory treatment against Native Americans. Prior to 1948, Arizona largely excluded Indigenous peoples from the electrical process, even though Indigenous peoples had the right to vote since 1924. The people were prohibited from voting until they could cast a meaningful ballot, which meant Native Americans were required to pass a literacy test in order to vote, which were later banned because they were unconstitutional. Section 2 and Section 5 of the Voting Rights Act are particularly of importance of the for the Navajo Nation and Navajo voters because the two sections prohibit discriminatory discrimination. Section 2 applies to all jurisdictions and prohibits the imposition of a voting qualification or prerequisite to voting or standard practices or procedures to deny or abridge the right to vote on account of race or color. This section also protects the language minorities which Native American language populations qualify. Section 5 applies to certain jurisdictions that have a previous history of discrimination. Arizona is covered, is a covered jurisdiction under Section 5 because the state's past history of discriminatory practices with regards to voting. Arizona must submit redistricting plans and any changes to electrical laws, practice, or procedures for preclearance to the United States Department of Justice or the United States District Court for the District of Columbia. Arizona must abide by its own constitution, which provides that all districts should be compacted, contiguous, must respect communities and of interest, and competitive, where the competitiveness does not take away from the other factors. The Navajo Nation Human Rights Commission, with the participation from other tribes, proposed maps to Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission, which complies with the federal and state standards. The Navajo Nation's interests, the Navajo Nation government and the Navajo people share common concerns regarding the state's federal policy. First, Indigenous nations are often confronted with issues regarding economic development, protection, and the use of natural resources such as water, minerals, wind energy, and coal. Second, Indigenous nations and the people consistently face challenges to our inherent sovereignty and the right of self-determination. Finally, as governments and as citizens of Indigenous nations, we share the common issues of protecting our lands based, based regarding protections of sacred sites, right to use lands and minerals, right to free prior and informed consent before development of traditional lands, and the right to practice religion and culture. The Navajo Nation supports the map. The importance of the congressional and legislative maps proposed by the NNHRC is that the maps provide for the opportunity for more Native American representatives to become elected officials. Specifically, the congressional map provides for the opportunity for a Native American to be elected to the U.S. Congress for the first time. The congressional maps include the Navajo Nation, Hopi Tribe, Wallapai, Havasupai, San Carlos Apache Tribe, White Mountain Apache Tribe, Kaibab, Gila River Indian Community, and Okchin Indian Community. This map demonstrates a 25.5 Native American voting age population, which is well beyond other maps proposed to the Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission. The legislative maps provide for the opportunity for Navajos and other Native Americans to be in a largely Native American district, where 62% of the voting age population is Native American. Prior to the last redistricting efforts in 2000, Navajo Nation legislative districts had a Native, had a Native American voting age population of over 70%. In 2000, the Native American voting age population decreased to 62.2%. Currently, the draft legislation map meets the 62% threshold. So on behalf of Mr. Ben Shelley, that's a statement that he would like to go ahead and have the commission to take in consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is former State Senator Jack Jackson, Sr., representing South from Apache County.
Thank you. How much time do I have?
As much as you'd like.
Thank you. My name is Jack C. Jackson, Sr. I live here in Wonder Rock. Pleasure to come before you. Very important body here. I was down in the state for almost 20 years, first as the House of Representative and then Senator. I would have still been there if it wasn't for the health reason I resigned and came When I, when I first got down there, I met a man by the name of Burton Barr, late Burton Barr. You probably know him. And he was a very powerful man, leadership of the Republican Party. So he called me to his office, and he asked me, "Mr. Jackson, what are you here for?" I said, "I really don't know. They sent me down here." So he said, "We have one issue, a very, very important issue I would like for you to help me on." "What is that?" Well, he said, "We have a very poor relationship with the Native American people in the state. They don't come here. They don't, they don't come here because they don't trust us. This distrust is based on the mistreatment, abuses, the state, the Indian people. How can we build a better relationship?" So I came home, I thought about it, how, what, what can we do to initiate a, some kind of an action to bring the people back together? Well, I thought about, before I came home, a state fair was going on. I went over there, and they had Indian Day. It was on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Hardly anybody was there, and the rodeo also, few contestant. So what's, what's going on, or how come, how come they're not interested in this, this event? Maybe we can build it up. Maybe we can use this event. So I went back to Mr. Barr, and I told him, "Here's the opportunity, I think. Let's work on it." He said, "Okay, so what do we need?" "We need to move those two days up toward weekends, because that's the middle of the week, everybody's working." I don't know whose idea was this. And we need to put more money into awards, so it'd be worth, worth coming here for. And we need to invite tribal leaders here, and the tribal council members, and who they want to. And we need to invite the legislature members to come, come and join us here. And this is what we're trying to do, is this will be education. So he went out, he went to the fair board and requested additional funding. He requested to move the dates up toward the weekends, and we've got all that. They gave it to, I said, "Go ahead." So that first year, that, that place was packed. And, and we were very happy with the turnout. The Indian leadership were, were introduced, and they gave them a chance to talk, who they are, where they're, where they're located, and how many members they have, and what the tribe, and what are some of the basic problems they have. So dialogue took place right there. And then later, later, I came home again, this is, I forgot what year it was, in the 80s. I had a, my wife's brother, the late Leo Watchman, who was a member of Arizona, New Mexico State Legislature, a House member. So he invited me to go to the Indian Day, Indian Tribal Day in Santa Fe. I was so impressed with all these tribal members participating in, in the committee meetings. See, why, why don't we, how come we don't do that over there? So I went back and told Mr. Barr, "Hey, I went, I saw this event over there. Why don't we do that?" He said, "Okay, let's start working on it." So we, we introduced a legislation to, to initiate a Native American legislative day. That brought the people in also. From that point on, the relationship got a lot better. It's not all there yet. So, so that, that's, that's about 20-some years ago that I came home, and they, they want me to come back this year to the Indian rodeo and tell the people that the real purpose of that rodeo. So I'm thinking about going. So that, that, that's one. There was mistrust. And since then- And since then, there's several controversial issue that popped out. One is San Francisco Peak, the, or sleat, over and over, going to court and all that. And, and other, other, other issues also, the casino, casino issue in, in, in down, down, uh, Glendale. And, and, uh, the, the people in Tucson area still have that issue with the state line. When Arizona drew its map, when, when Arizona was coming to state, they drew a line right in the middle of this tribal land. The people over the other, other side became illegal immigrants. So that, that's, that's a big issue to, to, to them now. So that, that's what happened. Someone just shared it with you. Another, another, another issue that, that I got involved in is, uh, in education. Governor Hall was the governor then. She was the one that was here with the Navajo Nation back in, as a teacher. Her husband was working over at Indian Health Service. So they know, they, they know about the situation here. So he, his legislation that she introduced calls for increase in tax. One cent on each dollar, a, a sales tax. So, so it became a very controversial issue. The Republicans didn't want it, only few of them wanted. The Democrats, my caucus, said, "No way. No way, John, we wouldn't, wouldn't handle this." So Governor Hall called me and said, "Jack, I know your situation over there. I know your schools. They run down. Some of them even have a, a, a restroom or water running in, in the winter time. Some of them don't have any heat in the summertime and some of them don't have a fr- uh, air conditioner. So what are you going to do about it? Here's a chance. If we get this money, we can work on that." I said, "Okay, I know what you mean. I'll, I'll, I'll help you." So that night, she ran it in, in the House, the bill in the House, and she only came with thirty votes. You have to have thirty-one votes. So she called me again, "We're going to run this thing one more time in the House. So are you, are you still with us?" I said, "Yes, I am." So all I did was, did was, uh, report what I'm doing to my caucus. This is what I'm doing. So they understood. You come up here and look at our schools, our school facilities, very, very poor. The, the same way all over the state, same with other Indian tribes. So that night, that bill was voted on. With my vote, we had thirty-one, it passed the House. I was a very popular Democrat for a few days by, by the Republican Party. My caucus gave me glare and said, "Why'd you do that for?" I said, "That's, I did this for my people, my constituents. They want it." So that, 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 uh, sales tax went up and would start, start bringing in money. And she had to, uh, work with, uh, a group called Standard Committee, Committee, like your, your, your group here. How are we going to use that money? Who's going to get money? How do we determine who's qualified? All that. And, uh, I know right down here in Indian Wells, uh, one of my cousin was a school board member at Holbrook School District. You know how the Apache, the counties are, 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 are set up? Narrow, narrow strip way from down south all the way up to north. The school districts were like that too. So every day, Holbrook ran a bus back and forth, back and forth, hauling those kids. So some of those kids were on the bus four hours a day. And, and, uh, that, I went, I went to the Standard Committee and told them about what was going on up here. They didn't believe me at first, so I went back again, several times. So they had, they had a, a, a manager, CEO, it was, I forgot his name. Said, "You go up there with him." So we, we had a hearing at Indian Wells. And there are a lot of people there that night that, that are here and so. The mothers came before this, this, this gentleman and some of them shed tears. This is how my little kids are being treated. So when do they have time to visit their parents? They get up at four o'clock in the morning, get on the bus by, by five o'clock, and be, try to be over, over in Holbrook by eight o'clock. When they get there, they're already tired, sleepy, hungry. That was a process that was going on. So I said to them, to the Standard Committee, "These schools are denying my people the rights to decent education by doing this. Why are they doing that? Because each kid has a dollar attached to, to them, comes from the federal government. That's what they're after. And also what they're after is the parents that come there down to Holbrook or Windlaw or Flagstaff, so they can do their business there." See, this was used as a mechanism of control. So finally, uh, when, 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 uh, we met in, in Indian Wells, this gentleman that said to them, "I heard enough. You're going to get, you're going to get a new school here, elementary school. If you go down, down the Holbrook Road, there's a new school right there in the corner in Indian Wells. Beautiful school. That's how it came about. And if you go down to Flagstaff and that area, there's several new school facilities that came about. We, we, there's another one, another high school, uh, White Cone, it's a charter school that was built with, with, with that, with that money. And then we, we barely got a school over here at Red Valley. They had, they sent their kids, sn- sneaked their kids into New Mexico. So, so, so with that, with that, the, the Standard Committee came up with a policy. Said, "No kid should be riding the bus for more than four to five minutes one way. No kid should be riding the bus for, for, uh, what was it? The time that they set. And if a community has hundred or more kids in that category, they classify it as a geographic exception. So they, they, they're entitled a new school. So that, that, some of, some of our community got their new school through that." So that, 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 we, we, we went to the Standards Committee and they took action on it. They took stand on it, which was very good. So I'm, I'm telling you because now that we have this Flagstaff situation, I'm in favor of both proposal, the, uh, the congressional district, congressional, uh...
Draft map?
Yes.
Yes.
Number seven and number one. What I hear is the only thing is, uh, with, with the number one proposal, the San Francisco Peak is, it can be in the Navajo District. And I understand that, that, uh, people, Flagstaff business people are opposed to that and they're going to try every way to change that line. And, and, uh, why is, why is that, that mountain so important to us? I had to explain this to my own kids. I do a little ceremony called Winaway. And, 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 and I brought, I brought some paraphernalia for you to see. This is nothing new. These were built way back there. It was made way back there before, before Europeans people came here. And on several occasion, we were, we were, we were, uh, just criticized that what you have here, your story, your history is not valid because it doesn't have background, history, or a, a document, a certification that these, these things happen. Our ceremonies, the healing ceremonies, that's, that's not, that's not what it is, they tell us. So you tell me the story, what date did it happen? We don't have no dates on it because we don't have it. We don't, we don't have a written history, but... I hope I don't take too much time. I think, I think, uh, I'm going to show you this because I want you to know that to us, it's very, very important. Those other tribes. So if, if, if the line is moved and San Franc- San Francisco Peak is, is, is at the other side, then that work that we put in by the late Burton Barr and myself and other people, that, that's going to be, they're going to throw that, throw that out. Because mistrust will be there again and, and, uh, our young people will be upset. And then, and, and then there may be some trouble over the Flagstaff because it already My grandfather was a medicine man for several years when I was a little boy. And, and, uh, after he passed away, my father was using it. This is just a couple, couple items we'll show you. And this is Winaway. There's a black one, there's a blue one, there's an orange, yellow, and white. What they say is we have four winds, one to the east, all four direction. One to the east, the black one, is a boy. And over here west, blue one, is, is, is a young lady, turquoise, turquoise lady. And then over to, to west, it's, it's a yellow one, he's a boy too. And over here is white, so there's four of them. There the one hauling the whole universe up, keep it in balance. At one time was a perfect balance, but since mankind starts disturbing it, it's, it's, the, the balance is, is not there anymore. That's why we have all these, all these problems. Other day, I was watching TVs, a tornado in, 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 uh, Mexico, that, that part of the ocean. And look what happened back east. Look what happened over in, uh, Louisiana, uh, uh, that, that area. And look what happened, all the fire that we're getting, coming from, from, from lightning. What happened, all these flut- uh, flood that we have back there. So though, 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 those, those, those problems are created because when the Europeans came here, this, that you, 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 you do as I say. So at one time, when I was a little boy, over in the Tisto area, my brother and I were used to herd sheep. We must have been around about ten. We sit there, we see airplane every once in a while. We didn't see these big ones, this small one. Oh my gosh, look at there. Look at there, those white people. They must be very, very, very intelligent and smart. We want to be like them. And even my parents said that. The Navajo people said that. So to put us away, that's a thinking that, that came over us until very recently, when, when we were told that throughout the world, the indigenous people are going back the traditional way because what we were told wasn't so true. Look at the problem that we have now. All those experts, financial expert, economic expert, look what kind of problem we're having, our economy. So they weren't, they weren't that smart. They created all those problems for ourselves, for us. So let's go back to our traditional way and begin learning. What has happened? The education on, on Navajo Nation forced our young people to forget about this. And this, this is, this is, uh, the air that we breathe in every day. All of us breathe in air. So we ask, we would, we talk to the air, holy people, and say, "Just give us the clean air and take out the, the one that's no good." If we breathe in clean air, we'd be healthy. It goes up into our mind, all the way up there, it makes us think. So, so this, this was created. Here is, here is the, uh, the chart that I brought with me so you're, so for your... It's a corn, cornstalk. These are the four whirl that we went through. Down here is a dark whirl, blue, yellow, and then the white. Down here, there's a woman and, 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 uh, a man sitting here. They're pointing up, up like this. It's the first man, the first woman. What they're, what they're talking about there is where are we going as a, as a leader? Where are we taking our people? This is the philosophy. Is our philosophy. And let's, let's follow that. There's two parts of that concept, beautiful concept. We just found out that it's so beautiful, right here in front of us. So, 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 uh, the, the, the college is using that concept now. Not very many people know about what it is, the definition. So when, when this universe is being put together, the holy people put them in there, all of the elements, sky, the water, the air, mountain, the sun, the moon, this concept was put in there. And as, as we, as we come up here, they ran a lot of problems here. Right here, when they left this area, there, there's a hook on being built. And, and this is a wrong, a wrong, 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 wrong thing with the, with facing the east door, we did the east and opened it up here. And this wet house too. So, so, uh, I think that we, I interpret this as the mountain that, that we have, the four main mountain that we have now, was already down here. As they came up, they came up all the way over here somewhere, right here, the fourth whirl. They, they came up again to the next whirl, but there were some beings living there, water being. So when, when they saw, "Hey, where are you coming from? Where are you going? You're not alone. Get, get, go back to where you came from." I said, "No, we're going to look for a place to live, please help us." So then they negotiated and there was a very, very intelligent being, one of them, that so you, you used to negotiate for us. So he negotiated with these people and he won. So, so at that point, we won our sovereignty. Our sovereignty was created. We, we, we have the right to live in, in, in this world. So, so from that point on, this, what I have here and, 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 uh, it's a crystal. This is still pretty common. They have this, that's why I call it talking stick, spiritual talking stick. We have people here, some young people, they learn the sound, the prayer, and they look into this with this and, and the future, what the future going like. What, what's there, what's causing, what's causing the problem, our problem? So we still have it and he brought it up here, all the way up here. And right, 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 right here, they used that to reestablish the mountains, the four mountains. It's now Jinatho, it's, it's, in a round circle like this, and two more as, as the doorway way up there. So one of the, uh, holy people call Ashetki when, 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 uh, when, the monster that were born here created problem, they were, they were eliminated. So he went and made his round, the mount, around those four mountains, six mountains really. So he had, he was singing a song. He was singing a song. So he, that's just an example of Flagstaff, the San Francisco mountain. It goes like this. That's the way it goes. Not the same for all four, they have different names. So that's very popular. Our kids sing though, say, "This, this, this is, this, this is how you're gonna get there, this is how you're gonna get educated. There's knowledge in these mountains, there, 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 there's hope, there's, there's a hope, and there, there's a hope, and then there's this thinking, how to think, there, there is a planning, and then finally, put in those directions, you can make a living, a decent living." That, that, that's what, that's how I teach my, my kids, that's how I talk with them. So, so, uh, this, this is nothing new, it was created, it was here when the white people came here, Europeans came here, and it's still here. It looks like it's gonna be here for quite some time. And if anybody that's trying to take the San Francisco people or sneak away from us, we're not gonna allow that. So we need your help, that, so, so, so eliminate a lot of those problems which may come with it. So, uh, I hope, I hope this is a short, short education, will be beneficial to you to, to why, why, why we're, 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 we wanna... The peop... Uh, San Francisco peop is so important to us now and in the future. We're gonna keep it that way. If there's changes may, there's gonna be uproar by the Indian people, not only in Arizona, but other, other tribes throughout the country. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. You have a beautiful singing voice. Any questions? Any questions? No, thank you though. Our next speaker is Rose Graham, Director, Navajo Nation Scholarship. I can't read the last word from Apache County.
Madam Chair, Mathis, and distinguished members of the commission and staff and audience, Yate, I'm Rose Graham, I manage Navajo Nation Scholarship Office. Thank you very much for holding this important hearing on the redistricting process in the state of Arizona. I appreciate the opportunity to provide this information. Each year, the Navajo Nation Scholarship Office serves more than 20,000 Navajo students pursuing post-secondary education in colleges and universities throughout the United States, providing scholarship and financial assistance. A majority of the students we serve remain close to home and attend colleges and universities in the Four Corners area. For Navajo students, Northern Arizona University and Coconino Community College in Flagstaff, Arizona are popular choices, as institutions are well-regarded and near the Navajo Nation boundaries. The graph below is, um, shows that over the past eight years, the Navajo Nation has provided thirteen million sixty-six thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars in funding to more than six thousand Navajo students attending NAU and Coconino Community College. And each year, in, uh, from 2011, uh, dating back to 2005, the, uh, funding to students at NAU number in excess of, uh, or averaged about 1.5 million dollars a year, with more than 700 students attending NAU. And then also in, um, at Coconino Community College, more than 135,000 dollars, um, with over 100 students attending the community college there. Therefore, the Navajo Nation, the Navajo Nation Scholarship Office supports the redistricting maps, draft legislative map, and the draft congressional map as provided by and supported by the Navajo Nation Legislature and the Navajo Nation Human Rights Commission. The map maintains communities of interest most aligned with the Navajo Nation and provides fair electoral opportunities for Navajo students and Navajo families within the region. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Furlan Clark, Vice President from the Office of Navajo Nation.
Good afternoon. I'm Furlan Clark, I represent the Office of the Navajo Nation Vice President's Office. Rexley Jim is the Vice President, and so I'm representing his office today. Um, good afternoon and welcome to Navajo Land. The Independent Redistricting Commission, Madam Chair. The Office of the Navajo Nation Vice President represents over 300,000 people on Navajo Land. Many of our citizens are rural members of the Navajo Nation, the state of Arizona, the United States, and of course, our representatives and citizens of the world. And so, a lot of our residents and citizens reside in isolated rural parts of the Navajo Nation, which are on, you know, the northeast portion of the state of Arizona, where many of our communities, our parents, our elders, our children, uh, continue to practice our traditional Navajo language, culture, history, philosophy. As you heard from our esteemed elder here, former Senator Jack Jackson Senior, we concur with that, we endorse that, we support that eloquent, um, presentation. We have, um, Navajos who participate in the local governing initiatives at the chapter level, within the counties, as well as with the state. We recognize the value of our voting rights and the protections afforded to us, all of us as citizens of the United States, under the 1965 Voters' Rights Act. The Office of the Navajo Nation Vice President supports vehemently the drafted Arizona congressional and legislative maps that we are here in support of. We find it necessary and prudent that the Office of the Vice President express its support of these draft maps. Both the congressional and legislative maps meet the current Native American voter age population thresholds established by the prior Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission. The proposed legislative maps establish a 62% Native American voter age population, which is reflective of the communities, the land, the population, the geographic, which is comporting with our natural, traditional, common, and customary laws, uh, which really has no boundaries. This provides the Navajos and other Indian people in our district the opportunity to elect our own candidates to Congress. Additionally, it provides an opportunity for Navajos and our other neighboring tribal leaders to exercise a basic fundamental right, established under the United States Constitution, the ability and the right to vote. The right to have our votes counted equally and equitably, the right to be free from any discriminatory voting practices, and the right to speak and exercise our way of life, which some construe as religion. But the Navajo culture, language is our way of life, and this will comport with that. Additionally, the Navajo Nation as a government and the Navajo people share common concerns with the state and federal leaders, policies, and this proposed map, um, is able to create common concerns, common efforts to unify our votes, our leadership, our vision, as we aim to protect our natural resources, our water, our minerals, the wind, the air, the coal, some of our renewable and sustainable energy, including wind, um, resources development. We also find that this is consistent with our exercise to, um, operate our governments as self-sovereigns, as sovereigns within the state of Arizona, as well as the United And just as important as, um, Senator Jackson here conveyed, I think one of these sacred mountains, the San Francisco Peak, is gonna be restored back to the Indian people in the state of Arizona for, kind of like, it kind of creates a balance, it restores a political, geographic balance, the exercise of that, um, political right. But also, it makes it more authentic that we can go to these mountains and express our prayers, exercise our ceremonies, um, exercise some of our sacred words, and some of these words, like the Navajo language, was used in the, the World War II, um, in the victory for the United States. And so through the exercise of our religion, exercise to free speech, this mountain and, and the ranches that are part of the Navajo Nation would be under one legislative district and congressional district, and we support that. Madam Chair, and members of this commission, the Navajo Nation Office of the Vice President supports the current map configurations for Congressional District One and Legislative District Seven. We respectfully request the Native American voting age populations in these two maps remain intact, and where possible, exceed the population of the Navajos. Um, I know Navajos contribute to the state of Arizona in very, um, different ways, and I think one of the important things is our cultural vitality. So, members of the commission, thank you for your visit to Navajo Land, and we concur and echo the sentiments from our Vice, our President, Ben Shelley, and also former Senator, still Senator and Leader, also one of our cultural practitioners, Jack Jackson Senior. So thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Ben Bennett from Fort Defiance, Apache.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Chair. It's glad, I'm glad to be here, and I'm, my name is Ben Bennett, B-E-N-B-E-N-N-E-T-T, and I do represent the Fort Defiance Chapter as their Chapter President. And I too wish to echo a lot of the sentiments that Senator Jackson expressed. I think that, um, we as Navajos are finally making a headway in, in a lot of our strides that we've been working hard to achieve through education, competing in rodeos, as Mr. Jackson said, competing in legislatures, competing in education, sports, and I think that we will continue to strive. I think that some of the concerns that we do have with the state of Arizona and how things are handled during Election Day are, for instance, number one, a few years ago, I think it was Albert Tom who lost an election because he was told that the people that voted for him did not have rural addresses and they used post office boxes. Well, out here in this community, we still use post office boxes as our way of communication. There are no rural addresses out here in our communities, that has yet to happen. So that is one of the issues that we do wanna address. The other one is that when we go to, to vote, the driving distances that we have to go to are very far, and, and I think that there's only a certain time that we can do that. And it's very hard for our voting population to have to drive across the country to get from a tribal election to a state election. The other one is, you know, when there's bad weather, that's hard to do. The other thing is that I think that would be very positive for the state of Arizona and the commission here to recommend that a lot of the polling places that we do have out there should be in the same location. We do have places of government, they're called chapter houses. We need to make sure that our polling places for the state and the county and the chapters all coexist within that facility during the same day, so we could all get a better voter turnout. I think that the Navajo Nation does, Navajo Nation, as well as a lot of the other Indian tribes, contribute a lot to the state of Arizona. One of those things is through the transaction privilege tax, that's money taken off the reservation, taken down to Phoenix, and is dispersed among the municipalities located down there. None of those monies come up. Hopefully, through our elections and our legislatures, those things will change in the near future. Based on that, I too support both maps that are being presented, the legislature and the, um, congressional maps. I hope that they do remain intact. I do feel that they can do a little better by increasing the percentages from perhaps maybe 63 to 64 percent. So that is my input. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sean Deshane from Apache County.
Hi, my name is Sean Bayshitney, and I'm speaking as citizen of the county. First, I just wanted to say I appreciate the consideration of our input here in Window Rock and in this region by holding meeting here. And I certainly don't mean to upset all the work and thinking that has gone into the division of these maps to date, um, but I just wanted to ensure that we're considering, that we're not omitting an important point. And that is, um, let me begin by saying that I'm well aware of all the criteria that needs to be addressed in this process and all the issues associated with it, and the deliberations to date. Um, and I'm also well aware of what it takes to, um, be selected as a representative. And I just believe that these districts that are purporting to, that will purport to represent so many different tribes, yet due to the size and diversity of these districts, that, um, it will offer little to, if any, opportunity for a person from one of these tribes to be, to be actually, um, selected and as a representative. So I think the, um, the issues are, you know, are in covering the cost of, of covering these districts during a campaign, which would be, you know, the number of signs you would, I mean, this is half of the state is, is the congressional district one, it's just, you, you're, you're throwing in border communities with rural communities with a city, one of three cities in, out of the state. It's just such a, a huge mix of people to cover. And again, the cost of traversing that area in gas, in number of newspapers to cover versus a small, um, you know, and I understand the, the population reasons for choosing such small districts in Maricopa County, say, or anywhere else, but, um, and then the most costly resource, that of time. For someone to take the time that it's gonna take to cover that immense region, I just don't know where any, any, um, native out of, you know, the canyons of Havasupai have a fair chance of actually getting to know each of these communities and having a viable presence at, through their parades, through their, um, meetings and city council... at, through their parades, through their meetings and city council meetings. I mean, there's just so many events that they would need to attend. I just find it very unlikely that they would ever be elected. So, and, and again, just to hone in on, on the different cultures that we're throwing together in these huge districts, the culture of many different tribes, I mean, you know, yes, they're all tribes with very different cultures, very different groups of peoples, entirely different communities. Border communities, urban versus rural, native versus non-native, and then again, one of three, one of three of Arizona's cities. So, I'm not sure what the solution is. I know it just, seventeen districts in Maricopa County, I just feel like maybe one, if there's any way to sliver out one of those to, to give us an extra district, a little bit more representation for this very diverse group of people, that certainly folks in Greenlee deserve to be represented. And that the other point would be just really looking closely at, you know, voting age population versus registered voters versus actual voters, and that those numbers are very different. I bring some comments from Chris Bayes Cheetney, entirely separate, but it speaks to the population versus registered voters versus actual voters issue, and I'll leave those for you. And that's, you know, the bottom line is, to speak to the gentleman's comments before me, you have young voters here that are counted because they're going to be registered where their families are registered, but they actually are attending school either in, in, again, one of the urban areas of Arizona, so that they don't really make it back to vote. Different primary dates, different general election poll locations, again, this is just restating what the gentleman before me stated, state ID requirement issues, voter information dissemination, the weather and poor road conditions, and again, that's just a factor of the, the distance that folks need to get to these polling locations. And then general welfare in terms of their ability to get to a poll and to, to do that on, on the, the one date that's available for folks to vote. So, those are issues that I'll leave in that separate, but, you know, those are just some extra facts to consider, and thanks so much for taking my comments.
Thank you. Let's see, our next speaker is Kimeth Yazzi, representing Navajo Nation Election Administration
My name is Kimeth Yazzi, not Kenneth. It's K-I-M-M-E-T-H-Y-A-Z-Z-I-E. I work for the Navajo Election Administration. I've been there for a while, thirty years, and my job is to work with, part of my job is to work with the counties, the states, and the federal government regarding Navajo Nation elections and voter registration, anything that basically has to do with elections. And I know Mr. Kanefield here, he used to be the Director, Arizona Secretary of State's Office. It's good to see you again. And so I thank you guys for coming up here to the Navajo Nation, giving us an opportunity to present testimonies on behalf of our Navajo people. And I have a copy of the testimony which I gave to her, so I'd like to go ahead and read from this, okay? My testimony is going to be regarding elections, voter registration, community of interest. Okay? The congressional districts, voting age threshold of sixteen percent, that's what's required, but ours is beyond that for Native Americans at twenty percent. And then also the legislative district voting age threshold of fifty-nine percent, but Native Americans are at sixty-two percent, okay? And the reasons why I think that we should keep the threshold levels above the state averages are, okay, Native Americans were not granted the right to citizenship until nineteen twenty-four, and they weren't granted the right to vote until nineteen forty-eight. But this doesn't mean that there's no challenges. There are still disparities regarding Native American ability to fully exercise the right to vote. Native Americans still receive inadequate services from county, state, and federal government because they are poorly represented at all levels of government. New issues that reach Navajo reservation are old issues in urban America. We got everything too late because of communication gap, kind of technology gap. Tribal leaders and then tribal elders, and then they work relentlessly to keep up with the rest of the world, but because of lack of services and lack of communication from other levels, Native Americans are still living in substandard conditions. Redistricting is one tool that we can use to keep Native America close in the race. The Voting Rights Act was renewed in two thousand and six, and yet, the Arizona Attorney General is challenging the validity of the preclearance provision, Section Five. It's ironic how this action, like his, is what placed Section Five in the books in the first place for, says, the state of Arizona. It's like he's fighting the same issue that put the, the whole Section Five thing into Voter identification issues targeting Native Americans. The state of Arizona has been diligently pursuing the full coverage of the voter identification issues on its constituents. The main intent of this legislation is to deter voting fraud and to stop election participations of illegal immigrants. There has never really been evidence of extensive voter fraud in the state or in the nation. The legislation only places an extra burden on Native American voters, in particular. Voter identification is a threatening issue to the Native Americans. This legislation changes the way Native America votes at the poll. They are required to show additional specific types of identity to vote, and this law only serves to increase voter frustrations among Native Americans. Why is there an identification process at every turn? Identification is already provided at the voter registration process. Why have it again at the voting process? Why, why don't we just use the voter registration process and be, that be sufficient? And here they tell us that we need to identify ourselves again at the polls. Native Americans in Arizona have become the unintended casualties as they struggle to find ways to comply with requirements intended for illegal immigration. In rural Arizona, voter registration, voter identification was not necessary on the Navajo Nation. Native Americans should not be held accountable for someone else's problems. At Navajo, certificate of Indian blood, CIB's family cards are more valuable as a source of identification. A government-issued census number is used as much as a social security card. Locations to obtain voter identifications are not readily available on the reservation as it is in the urban areas. We can't just go down the street and get voter ID because of the ruralness of our area. Locations to obtain voter identifications are not readily available. Other, other documents present the same problems of lack of proper identification. Extended family members reside in one household, and they often share post office boxes. Only one person is usually the, the person that signs the contract for the post office boxes, but the extended family members use it. And when voter ID is, is required, one of the things they, they ask for is proof of mailing address. But because you have six, seven people living in the same post office box, only one person's really the, the holder of that box. So, it's really not, not a good idea to use that as an identification. This is the same scenario with utility bills too. The utility bills are not issued to all the people that live in that one household. It's only issued to one person, the water bill and the electricity bills. So, these lack of documents, proper documentation for identification verification, causes eligible people to lose their voice in the election process. The Navajo Nation lacks the process to produce these type of documents for people to register and to vote in the state of Arizona, to use to vote in the state of Arizona. For obvious reasons, Navajos do not have passports, which is one of the documents that's used for voter identification. Most of us don't leave the reservation. And then eligible Navajos lose interest in voting process when additional mandates are applied. In the end, the Navajos are not properly represented in the county, state, and federal government. Also, illegal immigrants come to work in America, they don't come to vote. And then another issue that I want to talk about is vote by mail, which is not a good option. Voting by mail has become a popular trend in elections, and this trend is not suitable for Native Americans. Most, most Native Americans write, reside in rural locations and receive mail only through post office boxes. Many Navajos don't check their mail on a daily, daily or weekly basis. Many Navajos do not even update their, their registration, voter registration periodically, and they still have old mailing addresses. They update their information only when they are told that their information is old. Many correspondents from the county and the state and the federal government are discarded upon receipt because traditional Navajos distrust the government. And then also during this time, the postal services, the post offices are facing cutbacks that drastically reduce postal services, especially in rural America. Vote by mail is not a good option for the Navajo Nation. And then voting locations for Navajo Nation county, state, and federal elections. Some time back, the Navajo Nation changed its laws to have their, their election on the same day as the counties and the states, and that's the general election. We all vote on the same day, New Mexico, Arizona, Utah, and the Navajo Nation all vote on the same day in the general election. And this has produced some positive results because what we're going after was higher voter turnout, higher participation, and it has for Navajo Nation, and it has for the state, the county, and the federal elections. But some polling locations, they have to visit two or more polling locations on the same day, which frustrates the voters. For example, we have chapter houses, the local governments where, where chapter houses, Navajos register with chapter houses. But in the state election, the state or the county determines where Navajos vote based on where they live. So, if they describe their residence on a voter registration card, the county looks at it and they say, okay, this person will be voting in this district, or this person will be voting in this district, based on where they live. So, a lot of times, when a Navajo goes to vote at Fort Defiance, to vote in the tribal elections, they do. But for state or county elections, they're sent somewhere else because the county says they have to vote somewhere else. So, a lot of times, it's easier for counties and states to consider tribal boundaries rather than just saying, okay, you vote here, you vote there. We have situations where people even vote in the wrong places. Voters vote in locations where they are not represented by school districts or by, by county precincts or anything. I know situations where people vote in certain districts, but that location is not representative to that person. They are represented by other people. So, and these, these are some issues that we're facing on the reservation. So, a lot of times, I think tribal boundaries makes it more convenient for voters at the local level. So, voting boundaries need to be reviewed and set according to tribal precincts. Language assistance at polling locations. A large percentage of our Navajo Nation still converse in the Navajo language. As you are aware, the Navajo language was used proficiently in World War II, and the Navajo language is still mostly unwritten. There are limited literature in Navajo language, and it's hard to read to an average person. A lot of times, people must take courses to read and write Navajo. Many Navajos are also still unable to read and write the English language, and a lot of times, they are provided with documents, and they agree to documents that are contrary to what is orally presented to them. So, a lot of times, they sign away whatever to vehicle dealers, this and that, when somebody tells them, this is what you're signing. And because of that, there's distrust to, to the governments. Proper language assistance is necessary at all levels of the government, both in Navajo and in English. The media is what we depend on, but they cost a lot as well, as far as communicating with our Native Americans. And then this plays a role in the Native American historically being the lowest rate of electoral participants. Another thing that is a problem is, a lot of the Native Americans refuse to register to vote because they don't trust the services or the government. So, something needs to happen there. And then of those that do register, only a small percentage of them vote, not all of them. Provisional balloting in state elections reduced the voters, the voters' participation even lower because of the stringent requirements. Three counties in Arizona have a significant number of Native Americans residing in it. These three counties of Apache, Navajo, and Coconino have voting rights coordinators, they're called voting outreach coordinators, and they provide language assistance. The voting, the voter outreach coordinators program was established by consent decree. Although commendable efforts are being made by these voter outreach coordinators, the vast Navajo Nation still lacks sufficient services for voter registration and electoral matters. The Navajo Nation has been requesting a state-level Native American voting outreach coordinator to provide some state-level services for our Native Americans. In the end, a lot of the services that the government provides, whether it be at the county level, whether it be at the state level or the national levels, it shouldn't be a problem because it's something that we're supposed to do in the first place anyway. And through my job with the Navajo Nation, I'm always stepping on somebody's toes because they think I'm looking over their shoulder, which is what basically it is. But to me, if a person is doing their job, why would I be looking over their shoulders? I work with eleven counties in three states, and to tell you the truth, I got escorted out a couple of times out of these offices because I get on their case and because I step on their toes. But I always tell them, if you guys do your job in the first place and do it right, why would I be here? So, anyway, that fight continues. So, Native Americans need these numbers, insufficient voting blocks in the legislative and congressional districts, and also local districts, to elect Native Americans into office to fairly represent us, to continue thriving in the county, the state, and the national level. Thank you.
I just would like to check on our court reporter and see if you need a little break. You're okay? Okay, we have four more request-to-speak forms, and we'll keep going then. And the next speaker is Michelle Begay, representing Self from Navajo Nation.
Good afternoon. My name is Michelle Begay, and that's M-I-C-H-E-L-L-E-B-E-G-A-Y. I work as an attorney at the Navajo Nation Department of Justice, and I'm also an Arizona voter, have been registered in Navajo County. First of all, I would like to thank the Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission on all its hard work in creating these maps, especially with all the difficult standards that you have to comply with in creating the Arizona congressional and legislative The redistricting is very important to the Navajo Nation so that it be properly represented by its elected officials. And in order for Native Americans to be able to elect a representative of their choice is also very important. Within this legislative district, it's important that there be a Native American voting age population of at least sixty-two percent where the Navajo Nation is located. of at least sixty-two percent where the Navajo Nation is located. The current draft map, the Navajo Nation is located within LD seven and this draft map recognizes the importance of maintaining a majority minority district. And this is in compliance with the Voting Rights Act, section five. In addition, the congressional draft map does include a large population of Arizona. However, while the tribes may have very diverse cultural and cult, diverse cultural beliefs, they also have common interests in regards to their economic and natural resource development. I believe that the congressional draft map is a, an improvement from the pre, the current map because it does increase the Native American voting age population from sixteen to twenty-five percent. And this ensures, protects the Navajo Nation's voting rights in Arizona. These maps not only comply with the Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty-five, but also with the US Constitution and the Arizona Constitution. And therefore I support the draft maps that the Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission has worked hard to produce. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Ivan Becenti. You can correct me when you come up. Representing Navajo Nation Tribal Ranches.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Ivan Becenti, spelled I.V.A.N., uh, B.E.C.E.N.T.I. And, uh, welcome to Wind Rock. And usually we identify ourselves in Navajo. So that's, that's who I am. And, uh, I do work for the Navajo Nation Department of Agriculture as acting ranch manager, trouble ranch manager. So, and under the Department of Agriculture, we oversee, um, majority of the agriculture here on the Navajo Reservation. Whether it's farms or, or ranches. And, uh, we have various programs under our department. And we have the grazing management program, the veterinary program. And a lot of the extension agents we have throughout, um, our Navajo Nation at all five different, uh, agencies. And then also, uh, the trouble ranch program, which I manage at this time. And in light of the population growth on the Navajo land and the efforts between, uh, by the Navajo government to reclaim lands that were unfortunately lost, uh, Navajo Nation made deliberate effort to purchase lands on and off the Navajo Reservation. Uh, Navajo Nation has three major ranches adjacent to and in the northern, uh, region of Arizona. And one being the Big Bo Kias Ranch, which is the largest ranch in Arizona. And we do, uh, own Big Bo Kias and is commonly known as Big Bo, which is located, uh, north of Seligman. And it butts up right up against, uh, the city limits there. And is adjacent to the Walupai Nation and borders that have a Supi Nation to, on the north side. And Big Bo Kias is about seven hundred and ninety, uh, seven hundred and ninety thousand acres. It's a big piece of property. And we definitely use that primarily for grazing, for cattle. And that was purchased, uh, early in the, early nineteen nineties. And the second ranch, which is the Winslow Track, again, also butts up against, uh, the city of Winslow. And covers the area north, northeast and east of, of, of the city of Winslow. Hopi Ranchlands is also located to the south, southwest and west of Winslow. And the acreage on Winslow Track is about a hundred seventy-three thousand four hundred fifty-seven acres. And then again, that is also used for cattle grazing. And the third ranch that we have is called the Espial Ranch, also known, uh, as the Peaks Range allotment. And that's the allotment that we do graze on. And we do have properties within that allotment, which gives us, uh, full rights to go ahead and use the US Forest Service's grazing allotment. And it, and also envelops, uh, the Navajo and other indigenous, uh, people sacred site, which is, uh, the San, San Francisco Peak, which had been, uh, presented to you earlier. The grazing allotment's about a hundred fifty-three thousand acres and primarily used for grazing. In addition, uh, the Navajo Nation owns private land on that south side of the San Francisco Peak, which is in this Schultz area. And on this map, um, I don't know if you guys can see it. But the, uh, the northwest corner of this map, you'll see various colors. Those are the pastures that we currently utilize. And we do have a cattle association that's on there right now to graze their cattle. And it varies from year to year depending on the range assessments that are done, on how many head of cattle can go on there. Now, the allotment does include all the yellow areas. All the way down to the south, bordering, bordering right up into town there. Then onto the east and the west side of it, Snow Bowl is within, within that. Um, and then up along, uh, Highway eighty-nine and up in this, uh, far right corner, upper right-hand corner is Dove Tanks. So within that whole yellow area, we can utilize that. But we can't at this point because of the, the infrastructures such as the fencing. And the water development is one of the biggest issues. In order to graze cattle on, uh, those yellow properties, we definitely gotta develop, uh, some, uh, water resources on there, whether it be windmills, well drilling, uh, extensions of water lines. So, but that does include, that is included within our whole Peaks allotment. Okay, so. But in conclusion, uh, when I review the Arizona Congressional Legislative, uh, Redistricting Maps, the Independent Redistricting, Redistricting Commission did include Navajo's ranchlands in the district that the Navajo Trust Land is located. It is important that, uh, as fee land owners, Navajo, we as a, a program do pay taxes to the counties and to the state. And in light of the state regulations applying to fee lands, it is proper and important to that Navajo Ranchlands be both, uh, be in both the congressional district and the legislative districts. One. Thank you.
Mr. Becenti?
Thank you.
Could you, um, just, um, put that map in context for us? Where is that in relation to the Peaks? And is that all Forest Service allotment or is that private land? Just generally? He's gonna give you a mic.
Okay, um, if you would see here, right in this area that I'm pointing into, that's the very top of, near the top of the Peaks and the surrounding areas of, of the Peak itself. But the properties, uh, that we have, the Navajo Fee Land, is right off Highway eighty-nine right here. And also within this area here. And there's another map on this side, but it doesn't show where the, uh, the ranch house is and also the, the portion that we do own. But it's within that allotment, which gives us, um, uh, we have a permit with the US Forest Service to graze that property. And majority, like I said earlier, these colored areas are where the cattle graze right now. And that is what the agreement is between us and the Forest Service. Until all these areas have been developed for water infrastructure and fencing improvement. And after that is done, then we have to go through a NEPA study. And to make sure that, uh, we can go forward and design a grazing rotation within those, uh, pastures. So if you do see this map, there, they are district, uh, there are boundaries to each of these pastures. And they do have their own pasture names. Okay?
Thank you. And can we get a copy of the Peaks grazing allotment map? Thank you, Judy. Thank you. Our next speaker is Wava White, representing Navajo Nation Division of Economic Development from Window Rock.
Uh, my name is Wava White.
I'm sorry.
W.A.V.A.W.H.I.T.E. I am an economic development specialist here with the Navajo Nation Division of Economic Development. I would, I'm going to speak to the economic impact and how we collaborate and work together with some of the border towns as far as, um, developing, um, the Navajo Nation as well as helping them to assist us in developing some of the lands that we have purchased and the Navajo Fee Lands, particularly in the Winslow area. One of the issues that I wanted to make, um, a point and bring out is overall, these border towns use Navajo Nation data for funding for services, whether it be federal, state, local, um, types of recruitment and securing funds. So it's, it's not separated. The bottom line is that the Navajo people are the Navajo consumer of each of these border towns within Winslow, Holbrook and Flagstaff. And also Gallup. The, we have a working relationship with the city of Winslow, just, uh, um, just as my colleague spoke before on the ranchlands, we, there is, uh, different areas. There's seven particular sites that have been purchased by the Navajo Nation in the Winslow area. Most recently was a turquoise ranch, which is over three hundred acres that was purchased west of the city of Winslow. Economically, we are trying to attract some industrial and commercial development. That is our primary emphasis as far as working with the city of Winslow to attract, um, potential prospects to take advantage of these lands that are available. Um, most of these lands were traded or they were purchased to accommodate to the Navajo Hopi relocation relocates residents that were impacted by relocation and were sent to the cities. The Navajo Nation Division of Economic Development is collaborating with different programs within the Navajo Nation as well as the city of Winslow and the Office of Navajo Hopi Land Commission to develop these sites. Therefore, there is potential for housing, community development, economic development, industrial and commercial development within these border towns. That's why we, it is attractive to us to how the commission approved the congressional draft map to include these particular border towns of Holbrook, Winslow and Flagstaff. Also, I just want to point out that the overall data used in, even with the Small Business Administration, um, other examples are with the Northland Pioneer College, different colleges and, um, universities. They use Navajo data as far as, um, getting information together for their services and recruitment. That's why the bottom line is that the Navajo people are the ultimate consumer of these border towns. And we appreciate the attractiveness of how the congressional legislative maps were developed so that we can collaborate and work together. We are not going away. We are not, uh, the Navajo people has the interest to even buy additional fee lands to develop in these areas. Recently, we are in the process of developing the Twin Arrows Casino between Winslow and Flagstaff with a major economic impact that will help the growth of Flagstaff, Winslow and Holbrook. Overall economically, the attractiveness of the congressional and legislative map provides the opportunity to continue to collaborate with these three towns as far as, uh, Flagstaff, Winslow and Holbrook are concerned. And to recruit and provide the data and the necessary information to continue to provide the necessary services to secure development for industrial, commercial, small business and energy related prospects. With that, I thank you for having, having your meeting here in Window Rock and we look forward to the next step in your work. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nami or Naomi White, representing Self from Navajo Nation. You can tell us which.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's Naomi. N-A-O-M-I. Last name is White, W.H.I.T.E. And I am, my statement's gonna represent myself and also, uh, the Human Rights Commission. First of all, uh, the Navajo Nation Human Rights Commission provides the following comments regarding the legislative, um, districts proposed by Flagstaff and the statements made by Kevin Burke, the Flagstaff City Manager at the redistricting public hearing held on Thursday, October thirteenth, two thousand and eleven. Uh, first of all, I'd like to note one error on the document he provided regarding south of Payson. And in there, there's a note that the population, two thousand one hundred seventy, supposed to go to LD seven is an error. The map shows that the population shift was supposed to be, um, put into LD twenty-three. Secondly, uh, the census blocks that he referenced gave the example of the population as one thousand six hundred sixteen, six hundred sixty-eight and three hundred fifty-three. Um, on the map that's titled Timberline Area. However, those populations are not reflective of the actual census block. I think they're, um, populations that are within the census block. Our data shows that the population is actually significantly higher within those areas. So I'd just like to point that out. Um, third, there is a proposal, um, to move populations out of the Sholo area into Legislative District Six from Legislative District Seven. Um, if that occurs, then the population shift will reduce the Native American voting age population below fifty-eight percent, which that's not gonna be acceptable. We want to maintain, um, the Legislative District Seven Native American voting age population as is or even exceed that. Where possible, maybe even up to, um, like the previous gentleman said, up to sixty-four percent. And also, um, the Navajo Human Rights Commission has not been able to evaluate the request of moving Timberline in the Fernwood, Fernwood areas because we don't have the shape files to do so. As for myself, I'd just like to speak to the, to the topics that, that impact Navajo Nation and Navajo Nation voters. And also regarding the similar policies that the indigenous nations within our congressional and our legislative district and throughout the state that we face that are similar to each other. And also, um, I would like to speak with regards to the photo identification requirement. First of all, um, some of the factors that contribute to voter performance and also turnout of the public is similar to the circumstance that we face here. There is not a significant public turnout here, primarily due to the fact of the lack of technology. While the redistricting updates are great, that they're online, a lot of the population of the Navajo Nation does not have access to internet. You're in Window Rock right now, which is the hub of the Navajo Nation. And I would guess that a lot of people here don't have access to internet either. There's few places that have free internet access. There's basically no coffee shops that provide internet access or bookstores or any, um, gathering spots similar where you would find in, um, a bigger city such as Flagstaff or Phoenix or even in Winslow or Holbrook. That just doesn't exist. We have, um, one newspaper, which is the Navajo Times, and that's only published weekly. And for those people who, um, are able to buy the And for those people who, um, are able to buy the newspaper, um, the information is slow to alert the public on fast-moving issues such as this. And also, a lot of, uh, our people are not able to read English or speak English. Navajo Nation in the isolated area speak predominantly, uh, excuse me, the Navajo people in the isolated areas speak predominantly Navajo. And that is a problem for the newspapers because the newspapers, for the large part, are not published in Navajo. Similar to the voting pamphlets that are held at, are distributed, the brochures, the campaign signs, a lot of those materials are not provided in Navajo to the voters who live in the isolated areas. Also with regards to the photo identification requirement, um, as it relates to discrimination, in effect, requiring voter identification, photo identification has a discriminatory impact on the elders of the Navajo and also on other indigenous people who may have not been born at a hospital, who may not have, um, a current utility bill or a phone bill because they don't have electricity at their home and they don't have water at their home and they don't have phones at their home. And, um, frankly, I'm speaking on behalf of my grandparents. They live in White Cone, Arizona and, um, they don't have running water and they don't have access to phones all the time. And they got electricity only a few years ago. And that's in the current age in the 2000s. So I know a lot of elders and people who are not, um, who are not, who don't live in the cities and who don't live in larger communities. There's only, you know, one house or two houses within each community and they're spread miles apart. And those are the voters that, um, we are concerned about and also we're concerned about the native age voting population overall. Additionally, there's another example. I, when I was a student at ASU Law School, our Indian Legal Clinic helped an elderly grandmother who lived here on Navajo Nation, her name was Agnes Lafter. And she was denied the right to vote because she did not have a photo identification. And that's only one example of discrimination and that occurred in around 2000, around the year of 2010 or prior to that, I think around 2008. So that was only five years ago. So discrimination still does exist in Arizona. It may not exist in the form of literacy tests. It may not exist in the form of having an overt demonstration of the understanding of English from our voters, but it does exist in other forms. And also, um, it also exists, um, probably in new forms that we're unaware of at this point. Third, I'd like to talk about the similar policies that tribes face. While it's true that, um, a lot of Indian nations are adverse to each other on some issues with regards to, um, things like water or energy. Well, we're adverse and take different positions because each tribe is different. Overall, we're within the federal structure of a relationship with the United States. We have a relationship with the state that's distinct from other populations within the state due to the fact that Indian nations are sovereign entities and we have sovereign governments. And we're not cookie cutter governments that operate at the long arms of the federal government. Each tribal council is different. They vote on their issues differently. They have different interests. But that's not to say that because we have different interests, we should not have a strong Native American voting age population within the same district. The voters will, the voters should be able to have a chance to vote on a candidate of their choice regardless of how the governments are structured and regardless of how different their, different tribal councils treat separate interests. We're working on behalf of the people and the people have the right to select a candidate who they choose. And we do not want the voting age population to be reduced below, um, 62% because in the year 2000, at the last redistricting occurrence, the voting age population for Navajos or for Native Americans was around 70% and now it's at 62%. We just don't want that to go lower. And as a voter in Arizona, I don't want that to go lower. I want to be part of a district where the voting age population is such that I'm able to elect a candidate of my choice. And I'd like the same, um, in the years to come for my son. Um, lastly, I'd like to talk about the border towns Winslow, Holbrook and Flagstaff. The Navajo Nation has had a history of human rights violations with regards to sacred sites, with regards to water, with regards to energy and also with regards to forced relocation. And this has happened throughout the history of the Navajo Nation and it's happened most currently with the Navajo Hopi land dispute where Navajo people were displaced from where their families have always lived and has always grazed and where people have lived upon generations. They were relocated to border towns such as Winslow and around the Holbrook area and also around the Flagstaff area where they now have to uproot and create a new life for their children and for their grandchildren. And, um, our concern is to also protect those voters as well because they're, for all their lives and all their generations, they lived on the Navajo Nation. And now they're off Navajo Nation and we would like them to have a say in the state process as well and in the federal process. Thank you.
Thank you. So it's 3:15 PM and I'm wondering if Michelle would like a little break or anything? Okay. Um, how about we take a 10-minute recess and we'll come back in a few minutes? Thank you. Okay, recess is over. We'll enter back into public session. The time is 3:32 Window Rock time, 2:32 Mountain Standard time. And we are in the midst of public comment, receiving input on our draft maps for both congressional and legislative districts. Our next speaker is Margie Begay, representing Sale slash Wheatfields, if I'm saying that right? Salee? She might, okay. We'll come back if she, she just stepped out. How about Lauren Bernall, Bernall Lee, representing South from Apache County?
Good afternoon Commissioners, Madam Chair and Commissioner McNulty. I, I'll, I just want to thank you guys. You've done an admirable job with respect to bringing this process as far as it has come. I'm speaking from, on, on behalf of myself. I come from an area, my family comes from an area in Chinley, Black Mountain area, very isolated area. And, um, I wanted to talk a little bit with respect to my experience when, when I decided to change residency from New Mexico to Arizona and the problems that I had with my, with getting myself registered as a voter. Gallup, New Mexico is a border town that serves our area in this region. It's a huge border town. It's commonly known as the Indian capital of the world. And in Gallup, there is also a, a huge, what we call a flea market there. And, um, back, uh, 10 years ago in the election, I had gone over to register. I was there walking and I was accosted by two individuals who were, uh, had a booth there. And they said they were registering people and I said, I, I'm regist, I'm, I'm a resident of Arizona. And they said, no, we're doing Arizona and New Mexico. And yes, indeed, they pulled out forms from Arizona and I, I registered as a Democrat. I kept waiting for my voting, um, card to come in. It never did come in. So I followed up with Apache County and they said they didn't have any information. And I explained to them where I had registered and they told me that that site was not a legitimate site and that there were a lot of complaints that had come from Navajo voters who frequent the flea, flea market there, that people had registered and they never got their cards. I subsequently also, um, registered again. And as I indicate, my name is Lauren Bernall Lee. It's B-E-R-N-A-L-L-Y. There are many Bernallis on the Navajo Nation. And my, my father, bless his heart, he, he had a Navajo name. And when he served in World War II, they changed his name to Bernallie. It's an Italian name. And so when anyone says, I'm a Bernallie, I say, oh, so you might be one, one of my family members, but our name is unique. And so subsequently, my voting card came back as Lauren Bernallie and I was denied my, but when I came to vote, I was told I couldn't vote because of that error on my card. And I knew it was wrong and I said, this is not right. I need to change it. But I didn't have, I didn't get time, have the time to change it. And so I was again denied my right to vote. Subsequently now, I'm, I'm back in New Mexico. I live right on the border and I still have a post office box, 3,000 Window Rock, Arizona. And I was going back and forth again and finally, New Mexico said, why don't you just register on this site? So I did. But I still have an Arizona address. I just want the commission to be aware of these types of situation that many of our Navajo people are confronted with and many will not be persistent as they are, as I was. With respect to our, um, maps, I, I, I share in the support as many have spoken about CD1. And as I indicated, I, I still have a great interest in Arizona. I do believe that CD1 offers, um, a community of interests. And I want to echo some of the things that we've heard in, in the past or through the hearings is that Indian nations, indigenous peoples have a life way that is very common. Contrary to what was said earlier, there are differences. We are distinct in our languages, yes. But we do have beliefs that tie us to this earth, that tie us to the skies, that tie us to the metaphysics of this world, contrary to some other peoples. We also have a common bound, a common interest that bounds us with our natural resources. Moreover, we heard that many of our peoples intermarry. We have many Navajos that have married into the Hopi Nation, into the San Carlos and the White Mountain Apache Nations. And they all seem to have a same relationship that we have. We also are affected by common social, political and economic barriers that I believe that in terms of electing a candidate of my choice, this individual would be able to recognize these barriers that confront Indian people. I remember, I recall when I was down at Tucson, I heard, heard an individual talking about the vastness of this CD1 covering three borderlines, the northern, the eastern and the southern borderline. And this individual made the comment that whoever's going to serve in this district's going to travel 45,000 miles a year. I chuckled and I thought, that's nothing to a Navajo citizen. We cover 65 to 70,000 miles a year on our vehicles and we have trucks, big trucks that we have to carry haul water, we have livestock. And I thought, that's nothing. Well, it's about time, maybe a candidate's going to realize what it is to live in a rural, rural area. Those are the barriers that our people face. With respect to LD7, um, I really like the 62% voting age population. I also want to, uh, just comment a little bit that, again, in previous remarks made by other individuals, I get the sense that, uh, some peoples believe that they cannot be represented by an indigenous person. I feel offended about that. I believe that native peoples are moving forward. We have very highly intelligent individuals that are out here on the Navajo Nation, in the Apache Nation, Habasu Pai, that are making great strides for their people. And I deplore any comments that kind of allude to the fact that the government is dictating these maps through our people on how they're going to be drawn. I support the way LD7 is drawn at this point. And I also believe that as people have coined a term, the greater Flagstaff area, well, the Navajo Nation also has a greater Navajo Nation area and that area encompasses the Peaks, Big Bokehus. And as I said, we do have a common interest that extends all the way down to San Carlos and Greenlee County. We do have sacred sites in those areas. Many of our traditional Navajos many years ago worked down in that area and established, there were sites down there. That concludes my presentation. Thank you again.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Leonard Gorman, Executive Director for Navajo Nation Human Rights Commission from Window Rock.
Good afternoon, members of the commission. Madam Chair Mathis, Commissioner McNulty, welcome to Window Rock. First, I want to introduce myself to the listeners, um, those that are on the internet and also those that are in the audience. And then we'll talk about the Navajo Nation's principles and then the maps and provide some comments about, um, perhaps some of the issues that continue to linger as you go throughout the state of Arizona. But first, as my introduction, say yeah, Leonard Gorman. As a Navajo person, we commonly have the protocol of introducing ourselves in our respective language and also identify our maternal and paternal clients. I'm a citizen of the Navajo Nation first and then I'm also a citizen of the state of Arizona and also a citizen of the United States of America. And I have the responsibility as the Executive Director of the Navajo Nation Human Rights Commission to advocate on behalf of rights of Navajo people. Rights that range from voting to rights that range from having attachments, imprints to lands, cultures that have cross-cutting effects in today's society and also cross-cutting effects in the world community that we all live in. So that's, that's my responsibility and the team of my staff have those responsibilities along with the commission. Part of our office's responsibility has been to work with the states of Arizona, New Mexico and Utah to develop maps that are in the best interest of Navajo voters and which protects the, the rights of Navajo voters. So Navajo Nation established principles in which would guide us to this whole process of ensuring that these rights are protected. And as you're well aware, uh, Navajo Nation has appeared in many of your meetings, variety of places in which you've conducted your meetings across the state of Arizona. And hopefully that we will have also the opportunity to appear before you throughout the course of the next couple of weeks and plan to be a part of your discussions as you deliberate the final map that's going to be submitted for pre-clearance. And, and we do certainly don't hope to be a party in the last phase of, of what I believe has been in the past 10 years ago, the litigation phase and hope that we would be able to avoid those circumstances. And as a Voting Rights Act, as a principle of, of the Navajo Nation's Human Rights Commission's effort, our intention is to ensure that you produce the map, that not effort, our intention is to ensure that you produce the map that not only satisfies the Voting Rights Act as a threshold number for both the congressional and legislative maps, but also make every effort and present all of those opportunities that come to you and, and request them to have you approve those opportunities and incorporate those opportunities into the maps. And we've made the effort to have people speak to you today about the challenges that the Navajo people face as a voter of the state of Arizona. And I think that requires that you sit down and address the minimum threshold of the fifty-eight point nine-nine percent to be increased beyond the current sixty-one point nine percent that is in the legislative map. And there are tremendous need and justification to, to accomplish that. That has been our number one goal and we presented that to you numerous times, that the Navajo Nation's goal is to ensure that the Voting Rights Act is complied with. The second principle is the community of interest. Predominantly, there are a significant amount of land base in the state of Arizona in which they are set aside as reservations. As I understand it, a quarter of the land base in the state of Arizona are designated as trust lands, set aside for Native Americans. However, we make four point eight percent of the total population in the past twenty years. So we requested of you not to split those reservations among several districts. We requested you to ensure that those reservation lands are in a whole in a single district. A part of the community of interest has been ranch lands. The Navajo Nation owns a variety of ranches outside the Navajo Nation and specifically in the state of Arizona. And it's been explained to you through the course of this afternoon that there are specific intentions of the Navajo Nation Government to ensure that those lands are put to better use for the betterment of the Navajo people. These ranch lands are intended to ensure that Navajo cultural properties are continued to be protected, preserved from the perspective of sacred sites, to ensure that there's accommodation of land use areas in which the Navajo has continued to foster its relationship with the livestock, cattle, horses, sheep, as the Navajo people is growing in numbers. Part of the opportunity also is to ensure that there are economic development corridors. Interstate Forty is a very prominent artery of transportation for economic development around the Navajo Nation on the southern part. Interstate Forty also goes across the Navajo Nation lands. So as it was explained to you earlier, Navajo Nation is very strategically placing businesses in which there would be opportunities derived from those and that Navajo people would benefit. Finally, in the community of interest aspect, sacred sites. Sacred sites is a common thread among indigenous peoples, not only in the state of Arizona, but also in the United States of America and the world. It is a principle and a cultural integrity aspect in which it connects indigenous peoples, unlike other peoples of the world. The Navajo Nation has managed to ensure that the United States Government supports a declaration called the Union Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, in which there are plenty of iterations that provide for the need to recognize these rights. So as has been stated before, and you will hear many more times, the Navajo people have identified specific places that are identified as sacred sites. Those need to be specifically protected. And finally, the other principle has been that the first iteration that we had presented to you a couple of months ago, that those indigenous nations that we indicated to be in our district at that time continue to be in the district that you adopt as a, as a draft map, plus as a map that you intend to be pre-clear and also to be used in the future for the next ten years. That those have been our principles. You have heard many a times that competitiveness is a part of the review and a necessity to ensure that there be competitive districts in the state of Arizona congressionally and also legislatively. Navajo Nation has many a times indicated to you that if there were intentions to implement competitiveness on the Navajo Nation, you would be faced to split the Navajo Nation into segments. From our office, we have ran maps to determine if and ever that you were to embark upon splitting the Navajo Nation, the Navajo people would be disenfranchised and would not have the opportunity to elect a Navajo person to represent them again. You will find yourselves in a situation, and we will find the Navajo, Navajo voters in a situation in which the highest number of Native American voting age will be around the twenty-five to thirty percentile. That is definitely something that we would be having very, very, very strong concerns Regards to the maps that have been published as draft maps, the Navajo Nation has provided iterations, two maps for the congressional map. We labeled them as INN One and also INN Two. INN One, we have noted it to be a dream map. It is an opportunity in which that there would be a majority, minority congressional district, in which the voting age population in that district would predominantly be minorities. Some of it coming from Native American voting age population and the other would be coming from the Hispanic voting age population. However, both maps, the INN One and INN Two, have been an integral part of your work. And we find that substantial part of Congressional District One that you adopted as, as a draft map contains the Navajo Nation's recommendations. The Navajo Nation at both times in both maps have made a recommendation to you to include the Hila River Indian Nation, and you have accomplished that. You included the Hila River Indian Nation. And we have also made the indication in, in our INN One to include the Cochise County. And realizing that there is a penalty of compromise to be had in, in the development of these maps, we appreciate the opportunity in which you have presented a map that takes on and incorporates the Navajo Nation's recommendations. Thank you very much. Our threshold has been sixteen point eight percent Native American voting age population as we started. You've accomplished a threshold now that exceeds that sixteen point eight percent. The map that you have presented to us is twenty point five percent Native American age population. That is absolutely good. With regards to the Legislative District map, the Navajo Nation submitted a map that comprised of a number of indigenous nations, principally the Navajo Nation, the Hopi Nation, the White Mountain Apache Nation, the San Carlos Apache Nation, the Havasupai Nation, the Hualapai Nation, the Kaibab Nation. And we have presented a duration in which there's a substantial Native American voting age population, a voting age population in which we, we, we accomplish a sixty-two point And in development of these maps and seeking input and comments, the Navajo Nation took on presentations throughout the state of Arizona. We had an opportunity to meet with numerous people from different backgrounds. We've met with indigenous leaders, indigenous nations, and made presentations. Of all the times that we've made presentations, particularly to indigenous leaders, we did not receive any opposition to the maps that we've shared with you. Certainly, we've received comments about how Navajo Nation has taken a lot of lead in a variety of issues. And Navajo tends to be a principle in pushing issues policy-wise, political-wise. And we have no doubt that our efforts will continue in the future in the same manner that we have done before. And for the Legislative District, as you know and we know, the threshold has been fifty-eight point nine percent. And we have indicated to you that competitiveness is not a priority for the Navajo Nation. You have accomplished a sixty-one point nine percent Native American voting age population in the draft map that you have, you're sharing with the communities throughout the state of Arizona. As I mentioned before, the Navajo Nation has submitted a map that illustrated sixty-two point fifty-four percent Native American voting age population. I think you have made significant effort and accomplished feats in which you are in the right track, you're on the right, in the right direction to meet a threshold that the Navajo people believe is the proper standard, assessing the voting performance of the Navajo people. You are receiving multiple, multiple requests and how to tweak, which community needs to be taken or arranged in a manner in which it would be benefiting for their community of interests. We have made many compromises throughout the course of the several months. The latest meeting that we have had was with the City of Flagstaff, as we talked about the CD One and also LD Seven, specifically with LD One, I mean CD One. We have both come in and presented to you that the City of Flagstaff, the communities surrounding the City of Flagstaff, and the Navajo Nation share a common interest, economic wise, transportation wise. And we share a community of interests and made the request that Flagstaff be in a congressional district that the Navajo Nation is located in. You've done that. Thank you very much for providing that opportunity. With the Legislative District, again, we have made compromises. We have, people have asked the Navajo Nation to be flexible, to be understanding. And from my office, we believe we have done that. We have been understanding and have approached parties that have expressed interest in our maps to make amendments, and we have done that. We sat down again with the City of Flagstaff and we've talked about having to adjust our first map, the legislative map. Our proposal was to pick up areas in which in the City of Flagstaff where there are high level, high number of Native American population. We have agreed to take out the entire incorporated area of City of Flagstaff from the Navajo Nation's proposal. We've also agreed to take out Doni Park northeast of the City of Flagstaff. We also agreed to take out Fort Valley northwest of the City of Flagstaff. We have compromised. Furthermore, we have compromised to take out the area between Big Bokehus Ranch and the City of Flagstaff and the area that goes up to the southern part of the Grand Canyon. We have agreed to do that. However, there are elements in which there are concerns, as, as has been provided to you and we repeatedly made the point, that Navajo Nation in the greater areas in the state of Arizona has interests. It has interests by purchasing lands. No doubt that the Navajo Nation wants those land, ranch lands to be in the district that the trust land is located in. And you have also accomplished that very well. I think in the tweaking that you're going to be requested to make, certainly there are opportunities that still need to be had with the map that you have adopted as a draft map for the legislative, for the legislature. We look forward to having to correspond, as we have done in the past couple of months. You've listened to us very well and we have made compromises to ensure that we go forward. In the tweaking that you make, we request that wherever the tweaking you make, that would give the opportunity to raise the Native American voting age population. I think there are plenty of ways to do that in these, those requests that you, you have, you have heard thus far and you will continue to hear those requests. Navajo people live in a condition in which it's always difficult with challenges on the voting day. As you have heard and you will hear many more times in the future, that indigenous peoples often distrust the government of the state of Arizona and also the United States of America. And that plays a very strong influence on Navajo voters. And the conditions that exist on the grounds, as you've heard many a times, those conditions that people face. Just to mention but a few, mail-in ballots don't work well on the Navajo Nation. While that is an opportunity that exists in which a Navajo voter does not have an opportunity, that does not have the challenge of come up with, with an ID card, but voting, mailing in your ballot is not often relied upon process. The conditions on the roads oftentimes are very challenging. I hope that you will hear from another speaker that would talk about specifically those road conditions in which Navajos have to travel, on which Navajos have to travel in order to cast a ballot and also to carry out, carry on everyday life. So from the Navajo Nation Human Rights Commission, my conclusion, I believe you have an opportunity when you tweak these maps, the draft maps, for the Legislative District, you have a very, very, very strong opportunity to raise the sixty-one point nine percent Native American voting age above sixty-three percent, based on the iteration that we have presented to you and what you incorporated into the legislative map. And the final comment is in regards to some of the requests and issues that have made from the City of Flagstaff. Timberline area need to be taken out of Legislative District Seven, concerns about Schultz area. The Schultz area, as you will see when you study the Espell Ranch map, is at the southern tip of Espell Ranch grazing area. And then you will also find that the timber line area is on the east side of the Espell Ranch west of Highway eighty-nine. And that we would have interests in the lower portion of that area in which there are significant number of population figures, I believe it's over a hundred and eighty people. However, there's going to be some complications with that particular area. And that is the way the census block is configured. If there is an opportunity to, to pick up those residential areas without having to draw a map that goes into the grazing area, I think those are some, some aspects that, that would work. So thank you again. And, and the Navajo Nation has made many visits with you. And also, in, in our opinion, you have incorporated a substantial portion of the recommendations that have come from the Navajo Nation. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Ray Barney, Navajo Division of Transportation from Window Rock.
My name's Ray Barney. I'm one of the program managers under the Navajo Nation Division of Transportation. I'm just going to have, make a little insight on some of the statistics we have on the Navajo Nation regards to roads. The Navajo Nation comprises of about fourteen hundred and seven hundred roads, fourteen thousand seven hundred roads on the nation, with ninety percent of that being unpaved and improved roads, which makes it pretty much difficult for the Navajo people. Also, the road conditions can also be very rough in commuting to conduct the daily life of business, which also includes, you know, the going to chapter meetings, planning meetings, or any activities going on the nation. The lack of sufficient funding to address these roads on Navajo has been hampering the nation for quite some time. As you know, any entity has, or nation always puts education as a priority, but I always say that, you know, the road, there has to be a road that leads to a school facility. And we've been trying, well, I've been trying to tell the chapters and entities, you know, that roads should be priority anywhere. With that, there's also the, the, the funding to improve roads is not always adequate, especially in remote areas where some clearances, environmental and archaeological clearances are mandated. And with, with that, there's a lot of ark sites that are being discovered on the main roads, which hampers the realignment, which hampers the improvement of a lot of these roads. And I just wanted to give you guys an insight on those conditions, especially during the, also during the monsoon season, when there are washouts and whatnot, where it becomes that safety is a priority, not voting for or going to activity. So with that, I thank you for your, for your patience and your, I've been pretty much here for two hours, but, you know, thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kelvin White from Apache County, representing self.
My name is Kelvin White, and I'm a lifetime resident of the Navajo Nation. I come from a place called Wycombe, Arizona. That's one of the last refuges of the Navajo Nation, Navajo-Hopi land dispute. It was a struggle and challenge for our people when I was growing up and still is today. And I'm representing myself as a righteous voter in Arizona on the Navajo Nation, as well in the US elections. And this came to voice my concern and reiterate our support for the Arizona LD seven and CD one maps that you have, are contemplating and that is proposed before you. I believe that with each of these two maps, there's a, it would maintain a high percentage of Native American voting age population, the percentage would go up. There's a point from some of my peers that have lost confidence in the right for Indians to vote because of the, I could say the lack of really understanding of how important a vote is into some of the state issues, some of the state legislations, and as well as the federal. And I believe that with these two maps, it would give us a greater percentage of individuals of Native Americans sent to really provide and becoming more involved in the election process. And also that these two boundaries, these two maps, they include the San Francisco Peaks, which is in our back door at Wycombe. And I come from a descendant of some traditional practitioners and traditional healers. That's been the legacy of our people there, to practice traditional medicine and to practice traditional teachings in our culture to our children and our young, young people. And with the, with the two maps, it includes the San Francisco Peaks, as well as some other sacred sites that we're very concerned about them, and to the effect that we want to have some of the legislature, legislation, and legislators hear our concerns. And I believe with the high percentage of the Native American vote within the boundaries of these two outlines in LD seven and CD one, it would capture that. So it came to voice my concern and support of that. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Fafelia Bradley from Navajo Nation Gaming Enterprise.
Good afternoon. I wasn't sure if I should put my employer down or what have you, but I'm originally from Kent, Arizona. I've been working up in the Window Rock area for the past twelve years. Previous to my employment with the Navajo Nation Gaming Enterprise is, I worked with the Navajo Nation Council for a period of eight years. I am a voter of the state of Arizona, the Navajo Nation, and the United States. I have been exercising my vote for the last thirty years. And in reference to the hearing that is held today and comment period that is being provided and afforded, my understanding is that redistricting is technical, legal, and political. And in reference to the maps that are being presented and the work and the incorporation of all the recommendations that this body has received up to this point, I say you have done a wonderful job. I have seen the maps. I am in agreement, taking a look at the maps. They serve in the best interests of our Native American population. And I would just like to make that statement for the record. As an employee of the Navajo Nation Gaming Enterprise, the Navajo Nation has purchased four hundred twenty-five acres twenty-five miles east of Flagstaff, Arizona. That land has been put into trust by the Navajo Nation and has been approved by the Department of Interior. So the Navajo Nation at this point in time is, started moving ground two weeks ago as far as developing a casino resort operation twenty mile, twenty-five miles east of Flagstaff. And so we are going to have a larger presence in that area of our Navajo Nation. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Do you mind spelling your name for the court reporter?
P as in Paul, H as in Henry, E as in Ethel, F as in Frank, E as in Ethel, L as in Larry, I as in Irene, and A as in Arlene.
Our next speaker is Eric Deschene, representing Office of the Speaker in Chinle, Arizona.
My name is Eric Deschene. The way Mr. Leonard Gorman introduced himself, I'll do the same as customary with the Navajo people. Ma'i dishkishni nashle, ki'ani basichin, bit ani dashiche hanav, nashle. Chinle den nashla. What I said was my four clans and where I was from, Chinle. I'm here, I'm here on behalf of myself and also as the Speaker of the Navajo Nation Council, the Honorable Johnny Nays. He wished he could be here, however, he has to be into the western side of the Navajo Nation, meeting with some of the elderly people at their request. So he's aware that this is your second visit, and he wished he could have been here to have probably introduced himself and spoke, have spoken to you, but he's, as you can imagine, the Navajo Nation's demands are high, particularly with its people and the elderly. So I do know that in my discussions with him that he wants to reiterate the comments that Leonard Gorman, with the Executive Director of the Navajo Nation Human Rights Commission, has, has said, so I wanted to bring that to your attention. The, I'm going to pick up off of what Leonard Gorman said in a number of ways. He mentioned his clans, and I'll tell you just a little bit of information about the clans because it goes directly related to the illustration I want to give to what the Navajo Nation's position speaks to, is my first clan is Ma'i dishkishni, which is the Quehdi Pass People Clan. And there's other clans associated to that. One of them is the Ushihin Clan, the Salt Clan. And the Navajo Nation's position speaks to, as a less of a priority or a non-priority when it comes to competitiveness, and the nation, as Mr. Gorman said, is definitely coming at this, at an angle of community of interest. And to kind of give you an idea as to what I do for a living, I've been blessed with the opportunity to advocate on behalf of the Navajo Nation Council to state matters, Arizona matters. And so I've been, I guess, a quasi-lobbyist at the state legislature for three years now and working with the governor's office, both in the Politanos and now Brewers. And one of our trips, we met with one of our legislators, District Two, and it was an interesting dialogue that we had on a particular issue that I won't mention, but it was, he would have to go against the grain. And I'm Republican, so registered voter Republican, and so I was, it was interesting how I kind of went through my own thoughts as we were speaking to the issue, and of course, he was a Democrat. And we joked with him. We said, "We realize you're going against caucus. We realize you're going against the grain, and there's consequences to that from a political standpoint." And I said, "But remember this, you're Navajo before you're a Democrat." And he just kind of looked at us and said, well, he didn't say anything, but his eyes said a time. And another colleague of mine who was in the room, who's Ushihin, and this particular legislature is Ushihin, and we're all brothers, and this particular legislature is my big brother. By clan, these relationships are there. And so when I said, "Well, you're Navajo before you're Democrat," and then the other colleague joked and said, "Well, you're also Ushihin before you're Navajo." So there is a sequence of priority, your kinship, who you are as the net, and then whatever political affiliation you have and whatever. So it really kind of illustrates the significance of where the Navajo Nation is coming from, is, you know, I know some of you represent the Democratic Party, and some of you represent the Republican side, and of course, there's an independent representative as well. The Navajo Nation exerts itself as one entity, and part of the nation's priorities and positions is that we plead that you don't separate us. I think we're, I think in a unique position and an unadvantageous position that we don't have political parties, because they do divide, as is case in point as to what happens in DC on C-SPAN and all the other networks that you, that you watch, that how the divisive entity of our parties are there. And so by doing such, we compromise who we are as a people, how we identify with one another. And I hope my illustration you take back with you as to why and where we come from, is that we don't, we know we have to play the game of politics. It exists, it's very much alive and well. But when it comes to representing our people, not only just for Navajos, but also for Native American people, be it Hopi, be it San Carlos, be it White Mountain Apache, these, these people we have an understanding with, and we don't approach matters that are from a political standpoint. We approach them in a genuine humane way of saying, "This is, this is who we are, and this is how we're gonna, we're gonna profess ourselves." And again, it's, it's not from that competitive edge. So, you know, when you, when you just begin to discuss matters with Flagstaff, you know, of course, that's a major significant issue, of course, with the Peaks. From an Indigenous Navajo standpoint, the Peaks is part of our family, and so to divide us is problematic. So I hope this kind of begins to humanize and kind of gives you more of an advantage point as to where we're coming from, from the advantage point of where the Navajo Nation as a government is coming from, and also for myself as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And do you mind spelling your name for the court reporter?
First name is Eric, E-R-I-C, okay. And last name is Deschene, spelled D as in dog, E-S-C-H-E-E-N-I-E. And I'm not related to Chris Deschene.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jarvis Williams, representing the Kianta Chapter from Navajo County.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Jarvis Williams. As Eric, as I mentioned before, I'll introduce myself with my clans as well. And as I indicated on the paper there, I am from Kianta, which is probably just about two hours from here, north, close to the, to the corner of the state. I'm a registered voter with the Kianta area in Navajo County. I do vote at all the elections, the state, federal, and Navajo elections as well. And I want to say thank you for your second trip here. It's really neat to see you all here. We normally see you on TV or read about you in the paper, so, and about the squabbles you're having with the governor and stuff, and the Attorney General, and, you know. But we really appreciate your visit here, and we appreciate you taking the time to listen to our concerns in this portion of the state. I wanted to also express my appreciation for adopting a lot of the plans that our Navajo group had presented to you all. And I wanted to really, I wanted to provide an example of why this map, this particular map, as it was adopted, was really important. There's a, there's a bill in Congress right now that is sponsored by Congressman Gosar, which is related to the San Carlos Apache's sacred lands. And if had, if we're all represented in one little area, you know, the congressperson would not, probably wouldn't do that because the communities that he represents, you know, holds those areas very sacred, just like the Navajo hold the Peaks sacred, the San Carlos Apache hold those areas sacred. And to have a congressman that, I think he's our congressman, for him to sponsor a bill that goes against what we believe in, I think proves the point that if we had a congressperson from our region that was representative of all the Native American interests, we wouldn't have that type of bill sponsored at that level. And it's, I think it's, it's important to note that, only because this is a, censuses are, come around every ten years, so the redrawing of the lines happens every ten years, and there's a lot of actions by the different governments within those ten years that affect the communities that are in those areas, and the people especially. And so looking at the redistricting issue as it relates to Navajo is very important, realizing that ten years ago, we hadn't, we'd taken an active interest, but the ten years prior to that, twenty years ago, we weren't really a big player in it. the ten years prior to that, twenty years ago, we weren't really a big player in it. But given twenty years now, the Navajo Nation is a very active player in the redistricting process, and we want to make sure that our voice is heard, and that our, our concerns are relayed to the people that make the decisions. And so I wanted to, to take the time today to, to express my appreciation for your efforts. I think you guys are all doing a great job, and that you took the time to come up here and, and really listen to our concerns, and I really appreciate that. There are others out there that may not be comfortable in, in addressing a body such as yours, and some of them don't speak English very well, so, but they, when you do sit in the small circles with them, you talk about these issues with them, they have their own concerns, and, and you always hear those concerns about having the best chance for a Native American, you know, be it whichever ones are represented here to, to represent our interests at the various levels of government. And realizing that redistricting is the, one of those tools that allows that to happen, you know, they, they would all, most likely, and, and say the same thing, in that they would like to see someone that knows their background, that knows what types of issues they stand on, and to have them voice those concerns at the very highest levels of government is, is something that they, they really would like to have. So with that, I will again just say thank you for allowing me the time to speak, and I hope you enjoy your time up here in Window Rock and touring through Navajo country, and we invite you all back here again. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Florina Yazzi from McKinley. Is that the right? How about Dawn Yazzi from Fort Defiance?
Just short and sweet. My name is Dawn Yazzi, and thank you for your time and being here. And just really quickly and briefly, I do support both maps, legislative draft map and the congressional draft map, and especially in maintaining the minority, majority voting. And that's, that's all my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, do you mind spelling your name for the record? Thank you.
Dawn, D-A-W-N, Yazzi, Y-A-Z-Z-I-E.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Marisolyn Smith from Navajo County.
My name is Marisolyn Smith. I am from Canton, Arizona, and I'm a registered voter at the Canton Chapter and in Navajo County. I vote both Navajo state and federal elections. My concern deals with the lack of information regarding the candidates and the issues that involve the state and federal elections. In prior elections, I went to the polls and voted in the state and federal elections, and I was overwhelmed by the number of candidates and propositions listed in the ballot. I didn't know most of the candidates and the issues referred by the propositions. I don't know, I don't know, there were so many candidates, and I didn't know who to vote for, you know, I didn't know who and what I was voting for. And so I'd rather know who I'm voting for, and especially, I was especially confused when reading the proposition language. I didn't know that I had to vote yes, but it turned out I actually meant no. There's no literature provided to me in Navajo so that I wouldn't be properly informed about who I was and voting for. And that goes for my, my grandparents, you know, when I would go in there and to help them. And Chris Deschenee is my cousin brother, so when I helped him out, you know, during the times of his election, a lot of the elders were happy to the fact that he was native and he did come out, and, and I think that helped out a lot too, whereas we kind of had an idea of who he was. So besides the fairs and they all come out to say hi and everything, but in, in actuality, we really don't know them, only to, only for the ones that come out. And I think a lot of the, I've noticed a lot of the elders, when they do come out to say hi, and they put the name with the face, that helps them out a lot. That's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you mind spelling your name for the record?
Last name is Smith.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Latonya Bessenti, representing Self from Apache County.
Good afternoon. My name's Latonya Bessenti. I'm a enrolled member of the Navajo Nation. I'm also a voter of the state of Arizona in Apache County. I have reviewed both maps and find it to be the best interest of Native Americans. In reviewing the map, you know, it's important that Native Americans like myself have a candidate in which we want to represent ourselves. So I thank you for the time, for having, holding these hearings, and for ensuring that all members, all voters have a chance to speak and be represented. Thank you.
And please spell your name for the record, too.
My first name is Latonya, L-A-T-O-N-I-A, Bessenti, B as in boy, E-C-E-N-T-I. Thank you.
Thank you. That was my last request to speak for him. There were a couple that weren't here. Margie Begay, I don't know if she's here. Okay. And Florina Yazzi. So I think that concludes the testimony today in Window Rock, and it's always a pleasure to come to Navajo Nation. It's, it's not hard at all. It's not a sacrifice, it's a treat to come up, and, and we're really grateful to see all the familiar faces whom we've seen at many of our hearings across the state. They've provided a lot of input during the process and participated greatly, and it's wonderful to see them, as well as to see a lot of new faces today, too. So thank you all for coming out, and I'll see if my fellow commissioner, Ms. McNulty, has anything she'd like to say.
I'd like to thank you for participating in this redistricting process throughout the last number of months. It's been very helpful to us and been very supportive of the whole process, and we appreciate that. It's clear that, that the folks at the Navajo Nation understand the importance of redistricting to participatory democracy. You really do understand that it's at the heart of it, and that helps not just the Navajo Nation, but the entire state. One of the reasons that I'm very interested in what you and your representatives have to say is that Arizona's strength, in my mind, has always been its diversity. We have all kinds of people here, and the cultural diversity that you bring to us as a state, and one of the speakers said earlier today, the cultural vitality, are very important to each of us as citizens. And so I appreciate that very much, I value it very much, and I thank you for helping us in this process.
Thank you. And I'd like to extend our gratitude to the Navajo Nation Museum for allowing us to be in this great room today. We appreciate it very much, and again, thank you all for coming. And that leaves only one item on the agenda. Oh, was there? Oh, okay. My legal counsel has advised that I tell everyone when our next, oh, meetings are, next couple, will be tomorrow in the town of Eager at 9:00 a.m., and then in Honda at 3:00 p.m. tomorrow afternoon, and then Tuba City on Monday eve, no, Monday morning, I'm sorry, at 10:00 a.m. Mountain daylight time, Navajo Nation time, and 9:00 a.m. Mountain Standard time. And I'll just read also where these locations will be. In Eager, will be at the Town Hall Council Chambers. Again, that's tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. In the afternoon, will be at the Honda Resort Casino at 3:00 p.m. And then in Tuba City, will be at the Mo'ancopii Legacy Inn and Suites. And again, that's 10:00 a.m. Navajo Nation time, 9:00 a.m. Mountain Standard time. So please feel free to follow us on the road and come to another hearing. We enjoy having as many as we can get, and you're welcome to testify again. So with that, there's only one other thing on the agenda, and that's adjournment, and the time is 4:35 p.m. Navajo Nation time, 3:35 p.m. Mountain Standard time, and thank you very much for coming.